Just took it over. It's on the clock. All right. We will call meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I proudly, just to the blood of the United States of America, and to the public that we're just fans, one nation, under our individual liberty and justice for all. All right. Yeah, okay, I'm back in here now. I'm standing up till we're done. So, okay. We will begin with an open public forum. Is there anybody who would like to address the council? Anybody? All right. We will move on to approval of the agenda and establishing our current agenda. Does anybody have anything to add? Heather? Jenny?
Nope.
Ed?
Nope.
Wanda? Michael?
I do not.
I have something to add. I'm adding to the agenda, item 6.8, which will be near the end of the agenda. Ordinance number 2024-001, emergency interim ordinance prohibiting any use of the C2 zoning district. So that will come after 6.7 social media policy. Anybody like to make a motion? Establish your agenda?
Someone. Second.
Motion by Don, second by Ed. Any discussion?
I will say that the Castle Gate sewer forgiveness form wasn't filled out when we sent it because we hadn't received the information. We did review the bill from Castle Gate. It looks like his sprinkler system was using, it was automatically charging sewer. And normally, we do forgive that when customers have a lawn sprinkler. So the forgiveness on that is $2,908.99, which would make the bill $3431.78.
What was? What was that?
Dan, it was, so it's $2,908 off. And then it's $3431 for water and electric.
Okay. Anything else? Any discussion on the agenda? Are those all those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. So then consent agenda. I've already kind of covered that change to Castle Gate construction. Somebody like to approve consent agenda?
Motion approved.
Motion by Ed. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Wanda on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All right. Opposed, same side? Motion carried. All right, public hearing. Utility assessments.
Sure. With council's approval, we'll go through the different addresses. And I'll read their names, their address, their PID, and how much they owe for public record. The first on the list is Donzel Lindsay. It's 101 North Henneken Street, parcel number 37.0159.000. He has an unpaid water and electric bill of $3,405.09. His unpaid balance to do for citations and nuisance abatement is $350. His total is $3,755.09. Is there anyone or Mr. Donzel Lindsay here to speak? All right. Next on the list, and don't worry, I changed the spelling. It's Lucas Steven, not Locust Steven. It's 704 North Carver Street. It's 37.0377.000. He has an unpaid water and electric bill of $9,888.5 and unpaid citations and nuisance abatement for $450. His total is $1,0438.85. Is there anyone or Mr. Lucas Steven here to speak? Moving on. Pamela Ralph. Sorry, service address is 514 North Carver Street. PID is 37.0335.000. She has unpaid citations and nuisance abatement tickets for $700. Her total is $700. I will say that you will see in your packet that she disagreed with the citations. It is in your packet right after the claims for the month. Is Pamela Ralph here to speak? The next is Leanne Johnson. It's 304 North Hennepin Street. PID 37.013000. She has unpaid citations and nuisance abatement to $450. Is Leanne Johnson here to speak? Or someone on her behalf? Moving on. Amanda Milkie. 311 North Renville Street. PID is 37.0056.000. $400 for unpaid citations and nuisance abatement. Is Amanda here to speak? All right, moving on. DTDM Properties LLC, owner of 1009 North Carver Street Lot 6. PID 37.0611.000. Has an unpaid citation of $250. Is anyone from that LLC here to speak? All right, moving on. Christina Arms at 303 South Redwood Street. PID 37.0221.000. Has unpaid citations and nuisance abatement of $250. Is Christina here to speak? Next on the list is Jake Creach. Service address 307 North Hennepin Street. Parcel ID 37.0150.000. That is $250 for unpaid citations and nuisance abatement for $250. Next on the list is Sharon Meyer. The dress, service address is 105 South Main Street. PID 37.0445. Point 000. Oh, I missed one. I did. Sorry. It's Lindsay Mouchau. It's 801 North Main Street, 37.0420. It's $400 of unpaid citations or nuisance abatement. Hearing none, to speak. And the next is Sharon Meyer. Again, it's 105 South Main Street. 37.0445. Of $200 unpaid citation or ticket. Next on the list is Robert Bozma. The address there is 304 South Renville Street. 37.0183. For $200 worth of unpaid citations or nuisance. Hearing none. Vanessa Isaacson is 210 West Second Street. 37.0091. $300 of unpaid citations and nuisance abatement tickets. The next one on your list is actually paid. They came and paid today. TKRE LLC at 812 North Main Street. PID is 37.0480. $200 of unpaid citations and nuisance abatement. Anyone to speak? No? Total then, just so you know, the updated total with those that have paid is a total of $8,098.3. So, for those that were here at the public hearing, those will be assessed to taxes next month at the October meeting at a rate of 4.25% per annum.
All right. Somebody like to make a motion regarding this resolution?
Nope. We're just closing the public hearing.
Oh, that's right.
Sorry.
Okay. So then we can move on to...
You'll need a motion to close the public hearing.
Thanks.
Motion to close. Public hearing.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carried. Okay.
Top-notch concrete?
Yes.
So...
6.1.
Yeah, so top-notch concrete has put a bid in for $33,380. It's to fix the following. So fixing the stairs on the ramp at City Hall. The sidewalk outside of City Hall. Both replacing it and actually making it wider for the stairs so we stop cracking it. Repair work and additional work to the ADA ramp by the fire hall. So when we vote at the fire hall right now, anyone in a wheelchair or incapacitated has to go all the way down to the east side of the building and then come up. This would flatten it out. It's actually going to fix the doorway as well. The doorway is actually sinking, how it was constructed. So they're going to dig underneath that and put a concrete block under that as well. And then, Grant Street people will love this. But we'll actually, we're going to cut portions of Grant Street out and replace them with some concrete. I will tell you, depending on the weather, we hope to have that done this fall. But we also don't want to shut it down when we don't have Second Street open. So there's some logistics in there and some timing. Otherwise, we'll complete that work in the spring. This was budgeted for this year under the street departments. We had budgeted over $40,000. So this actually came in under budget. But I still wanted council approval and just letting you know that we are making progress finally on making it happen.
I would just like to say I know that how expensive concrete work is and I was pleasantly surprised by this bid.
And just want to note too, that you had mentioned that you reached out to local contractors and none of them chose to bid, so...
Yeah, they just had other jobs that were bigger and they're just too busy right now.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the concrete projects.
I'll second. Second by Don. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carried. All right, moving on to 6.2. The resolution regarding the forum investment.
So obviously primaries are going to go down, which means that our investment fund will go down if we don't move it. This locks in about $2.4 million into a 12-month investment rate of 4.3%. That is not all the cap money, but it's a significant portion of our capital expenditure money.
To be clear on how that works. So if I have any questions for Michael?
I move that we approve the transfer of the money into 12-month forum fund investment.
Motion by Wanda, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Don. Any discussion? Any discussion?
I would just like to thank the city staff for following up on that. We did not make use of funds like this in previous years. And the interest is real money that has a definite impact on our budget. So, thank you very much.
All right. Any other discussion on the resolution about the forum? Are those all called a motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carried. All right, 6.3, Fire Department Volunteer Hire. Yay.
Yeah, so we do need these for Para and for the state of Minnesota. So this is just a resolution, hiring Brandon Brooks as our volunteer firefighter. He actually came in with all his credentials from another fire department. So it was a pretty easy move over. He's been involved with a lot of stuff.
Good. All right, you need action on that. Anybody like to make a motion? Motion by Don, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jenny. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carried. 6.4, Budget Review.
Yeah, so this is just kind of a preview of what next meeting will look like. So we won't have truth and taxation, but this is the form that we're going to use during truth and taxation. Currently, our operating budget is down 12%, or $185,000. Our capital reserves, council reduced above 11%, or $22,000. So our total expenses that we have declined in the in the budget year-over-year was $207,000, which is 12% down. Our revenues obviously have decreased more than that at 19%. And so we're looking right now as a preliminary levy of about 14%. And we'll put the stuff that we worked on today in the next meeting, which I think our overall levy was only at 10% for the preliminary. And then, obviously, we'll have time to work on it. So we'll have about two months before we have to finalize the actual levy, which will be early December. I just gave you the general breakdown and where things increased in the next couple pages. Where the the actual revenues decreased, because that's what council was asking for. And then we did get our finalized work comp and liability insurance. So the work comp insurance went up $27,000. That was quite a bit of difference. And liability insurance went up another $5,000. Our health insurance for the city staff, individual health insurance, that is, went up about $36,000. So those increases almost covered exactly what we decreased. So that's just some food for thought. I did put in here just some decreased expenditures. We did decrease spending by 12%. We decreased engineering and projects fees by $30,000. Road maintenance, so that was actually Grant Street. That was to fund the Grant Street repair. That was $40,000 that we took out. Motorfield, we decreased by departments by over $8,000. EDA was cut funding by almost $40,000. Payroll on the enterprise fund went down $160,000. Professional services, we decreased by $15,000 year-over-year. Legal services, our new legal services are just less expensive so far. So we've saved over $20,000 in legal expenses. Our electric utility is, I think, a win for the citizens. Not only did we install new windows in City Hall, but we actually did a lot of work on our pump and fill stations. That lift station right now is using half of the electricity that it used to use. So we decreased electricity utilities by almost $15,000. It's a, you know, that's a real savings year-over-year. And then maintenance repairs and structures, that came out of different segments of each budget, but we decreased that by almost $40,000.
I agree, and I just want to say like that, electric utility savings, that's not just a one-year change. That's...
Every year.
Every year. An ongoing thing. That was, yeah, that's...
It's a big deal.
Impressive.
And that's because we replaced that valve.
Yeah, so the check valves, the air compressor valves and... Yep. And the new motors are smaller, so they actually just consume less energy, but we're actually pumping way less. And then I just put a rate of inflation calculator because I think that's an easy one to look at. So the first year that I have on here was 10 years ago, it was in 2015. The tax levy at that time was 678,116. So last year, our levy was 893,300. And our rate of inflation calculator put us at 892,0128.22 off. Just the rate of inflation from 2015 to 2024. And obviously with our preliminary budget, we're still off 113, off the rate of inflation. I just think it's a good comparison chart. And that's about it. And then we'll have our next budget meeting next week, Monday. Just to remind council, we'll have our budget meeting at 6:00 PM. And then we actually will have a normal council meeting at 7:00, where we pass the preliminary budget.
All right. Any questions about the budget review or the date of the next meeting?
Anyone have questions?
That's going to make sure we all know about the date of the meeting. Got it covered? Okay. Moving on to 6.5. Resolution 2024-035 authoring execution of MOU for streams. Michael?
Yeah, so the Streams Committee got together and we hired Flattery and Hood to look at our agreement. Our initial intent agreement was good. This one's better, because it's a little bit more spelled out. So each city, us, New Auburn, Given, and Lafayette, and then the two enterprises, which is DFA and Heartland Corn Products, all put in $25,000. All $150,000 of that money is being used exclusively for engineering right now. And what we're asking the engineers to figure out is what are the rates and how much would that be year-over-year? What does our capital cost for those? So that is what the engineers are working out right now. We still meet monthly. The industries are very happy that we're working on this. This wastewater thing is a big deal. Not only for the cities, but actually for the industries as well. MPCA has been very positive about the project. They're excited to put seven permits into one permit. And they're also excited because this, our preliminary estimates right now are actually cheaper than each city building their own wastewater. And then you just think about labor and overall cost over time. It is a big swing. I will tell you that the wastewater facility might be built first and then the reuse part of it will be built at a later time. So we are looking at that and what cost savings that would be. And then the industry that's interested in the reuse project would actually be paying all the capital expenses on that. So it would be on their land, on their dime. They would power the electric to it. We would just be using it to get rid of some of our wastewater. So that was actually the industry. Heartland Corn Products signaled to us that like maybe they're just not ready yet for all the specs that we need, because we need to clean it to a certain percentage, right? And right now, they're really not sure what that percentage is. So instead of halting the wastewater project, they want us to move forward. And then at a later time, the reuse will come into play. So, right now, it looks like about a 1.8 million gallon reuse facility. So we're working on it. I know it's slow work. It's a lot of engineering, but they are working on it diligently. Kurt Reitz, who is our wastewater expert that we hire out, that holds our, some of our licensure, is also helping with the project. He's actually collecting data from each city in order to get the data to Kimley Horn. It actually was a cost savings measure for us, since he is so familiar with the communities. It was actually cheaper for him to just go get the data from the industries and the cities and then compile it for Kimley Horn. So we're still working on the project. Again, this MOU that you're approving tonight is just a better MOU than the old one. It closes some legal loopholes and really commits the city councils to move forward with just that amount of money.
I've been sitting in on some of those meetings and there are a lot of really, really smart people talking about, you know, lots of engineering stuff that I don't quite understand. But all the cities are going to have to deal with this. The MPCA isn't going to let us keep going with the wastewater that we, levels that we have right now. So I really think this is a very important project going forward, so...
Yeah, and I think economically, Julie, just to bounce off that, economically, you know, industries are going to grow where they don't have to deal with wastewater, because no one wants to be part of the wastewater industry. And so when we're having these conversations, it's really about like, how do we get out of this and make it your problem? Which is fine. We're going to do it anyway. And so I think that, you know, positive, you know, DFA, this might be a make or break. Maybe this isn't for them anymore. Their facility needs work, a lot of work. And so they're looking at it as an advantage for our city to have it. So I think it'll be, it'll be good for everyone.
And when two of our largest businesses in the community are active players in the discussion, that really lends weight to it also.
All right. We need action on that. Would somebody like to make a motion authorizing this MOU?
I move that we authorize execution of that MOU for streams.
Motion by Wanda, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Jenny. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carried. All right.
6.6, City Hall Flat Roof.
So our flat roof that is just on the north side here, that kind of hangs over the building, is, I don't know if you've noticed, but it's retaining water and growing for vegetation. We got the vegetation off, it's fine. But the actual drain for it is about an inch above the rest of the roof, because it's saying. All I'm asking for tonight is council's permission to go out to get estimates on what they want to do, if it's put a pitch roof on or replace the flat roof. We got as much water off of it as we could, but there's still a significant amount of water on it. You can tell it's been patched a few times over the years, like flat roofs just do. But, you know, we probably want someone to come look at that and take a gander.
You can see it anytime you walk in the women's restroom up here, because you look out the window and there's like a little pond on the roof. All right. Somebody like to make a motion regarding the estimates about that?
I move to go look for estimates to repair that roof.
Motion by Don, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ed. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carried.
I'm going to get some ducks.
6.7, Social Media Policy. The last time we addressed this was 2015.
2015.
I was pretty new as a council. So it's, yeah, about time we talked about this.
Yeah. So I, I'll just tell you from the legal Minnesota city standpoint, some updates that they're suggesting that we do. And you don't have to. This is just conversation, I think, at this point. You know, the the moderation of social media is still under retention laws. So at the end of every year, we have to download everything from social media and put it in our retention files. What the league is suggesting is that we really, we just turn off comments altogether on any posts that we do. Just because it's hard to respond all the time to people and, you know, people interpret things differently. So we can, we can do kind of whatever city council wants. I will tell you that I wouldn't recommend continuing expanding our social media presence. So there's other cities that are hitting X and what's the other one, Threads? Threads? Yeah. And some are getting like TikTok and doing all kinds of things. Number one, I think that's too much for a city. And number two, I don't know if it's really beneficial. We do use social media, obviously, to get the word out about certain things when we have snow emergencies. But I think, you know, more and more cities are getting, you know, taken to court over freedom of speech. You know, someone says something super vulgar and the city decides to hide that comment or delete the comment. That is actually free speech. So it hasn't been decided in Minnesota State Supreme Court yet if that's actually protected, but, I mean, it's going to continue to come up. So their recommendation, their main recommendation from our current guidelines to a new one is just disable comments so that the comments don't have to come in. And they can certainly contact us, right? Through email, phone, so...
So we would maintain the social media presence in that we can put out information about snow removal and library activities and all of those important things. But they'll be information only and there won't be any responses online.
I mean, yeah, so the, yes. So in their policy, there it is, sorry. It's under information, information never to be posted in the posting guidelines. It says, "The city reserves to write, delete any comments within its sole discretion, but not limited to the comments that contain vulgar language, attack, harass a particular age, race, group, or sex, advertise for sale or promotion of goods and services, or off-topic comments, contain sexual content or links to sexual content." advocate illegal activity, disclose private information, or considered spam, is considered information that tend to compromise the safety or security of the public or public systems, or appear to be mistakes," which, you know. So all of those things, what what the League of Minnesota Cities is saying is all those things technically are protected under the First Amendment. So when we delete, hide, you know, what we're saying is we reserve the right. But what the Constitution is saying is you really don't get to reserve the right to. I mean, who who decides when it's spam?
So since the world is a different place than it was in twenty fifteen, do we need to look at this policy and revise it?
Yeah, I think, you know, I I included the social media policy from Emma League.
Yeah.
And I think that theirs is a little bit more broad stroked. I think it puts other things like blogs and videos and engaging the web-based platform. Because we use Constant Contact as well, which is technically a social media site. And we don't really have a policy that governs it.
So I think I would rather have a committee look at that and make sure that this is tailored to fit Winthrop and going forward into twenty twenty five than to just adopt the model policy because I don't think one size fits all.
Do you, which committee do you want to? Or do you want to form a new committee or an ad hoc committee? Or would you just want the admin committee to look at it?
That was my thought. Someone's going to throw something at me. It's okay. Yeah, let's, I think, let's, let's give it to admin and then we can come back with the recommendation to council for social media policy. Yes. Do we want to address anything right now? Change our?
I don't think so. I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna change it, let's do it already. It's less work for everyone.
Works for me. Okay, so that was basically just information only and we'll bring it back. Okay. Anything else on social media? Good with just sending it to admin? All right, that brings us to six point eight. And I would entertain a motion to waive the reading and pass the motion for ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero one that places a moratorium on the location, establishment, or operation of any new uses in the C two zoning district in the city of Winthrop until July first, twenty twenty five. So, motion by Wanda, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Dawn. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. All right. Moving on to committees and updated updates. Michael.
Okay. I have a printout for you too, if you really would like it. I'll start with the EDA. So the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation, we're part of REV between us, Given, and Fairfax. We're the only REV group that has three communities. I will tell you that this group is really fun to work with and we're doing great things. Smith has awarded us twenty thousand dollars in the form of a grant to hire an economic development coordinator for our three communities. That is, that will allow us, I guess, to have a point person for economic development within the three. This grant extends to the end of twenty twenty five, so we don't really need to have a plan in place. We actually go on Thursday as a group to go speak to them about the grant and some highlights. Just so you know, we were the first pick for the grant, so good for them. They're they're doing good things. REV does have a meeting in September. You guys should have all received a meeting invite. It's September seventeenth, twenty twenty four. We will have public meetings eventually as well. Obviously, the public is willing, is welcome to attend in Fairfax. We've included the Smith staff and some economic development folks. So it'll be a fun, dorky EDA meeting. It'll be fun. Second Street. Progress continues on Second Street. If you haven't noticed, Curbing Gutter should be going down tomorrow, all the way from Hennepin to a little bit past Harbor. We should be making more progress and have substantial work completed by November first. The parking lot project and the alleyways. The alleyway definitely will get done. I don't know about the parking lot at this time. We'll have updated dates for you on Wednesday when we have our construction meeting. Alleyways, right now their closure is actually due to our utility, not the project. We are wanting new pipe for electrical to get the overheads down. So now's the time if we want to plan through the future. So there is conduit going from underneath the road on Second Street, kind of protecting all of the fiber also. So when we're ready and can afford it, we'll pull the wires through and and get the, get the lines down. Parks, the splash pad portion of the park is hopefully going up to bid October, November. We should see significant completion in a bid by May or June of next year. The next park meeting is September eleventh at five P M. Evaluation, so it's evaluation mode for city staff and department heads. Link with a survey to my performance evaluation should have been in everyone's inbox. I'll resend it next week sometime when I get the time. Additionally, we're going to have short surveys for all the department heads, including the city clerk. Truth and taxation is December second at seven P M. Public Works, I just wanted to give you an update from Troy. He's at the fire meeting. So this is from him. Dugouts are done in the park, so it looks way different with the dugouts gone. It looks very open. Overhead in the alleyway by the grocery store, I don't know if I, we ever updated you guys on that, but the pole actually, once we got the electric out, just kind of tipped over. So I'm glad we got it down. But all of that utility is now underground. Utilities is also working on installing new electric in the alleyways. We're also fixing the lights on Fourth Street. So you've probably noticed Tommy and Dylan on Fourth Street replacing light heads. Ninety percent of them were not working. There is two or three by the gas station that still are not working. We're going to continue to work on pulling new wire for them in the future. The list station upgrades have been finalized. He wanted to tell you that we have both new check valves in, both air release valves, and the two new pumps, and they're pumping thirty percent less than they used to be. This was a big improvement. They've already used less energy and less pumping and less waters coming back to the station because of the valves. This next week and the week after, you'll see Troy and Chris and Tommy probably all working on Second Street. That is for us laying the pipe work for all the streetlights and all the electrical for the streetlights. So you'll see a lot of them down there. R and R has been great to work with, by the way. I I would say that they were a very good construction company to work with on this project, so kudos to them.
All right. Fire is next. Let's see, Adam, do you have anything from them?
That their open house is coming up. October fifth.
Yes. So everybody make an effort to attend that. That's usually a really good community event. Yeah. Ambulance. You're up. Gotcha.
Got me. So we are working on, I shouldn't say we. Sam is working on getting a class set up in Winthrop. We need ten people to take the class and we've got, I know of six already that have signed up to to take the class or have committed to take the class. We've got a couple of interviews with a couple of other people. There are quite a few of the, of our youth high school students that are taking the class. Some of the changes that were made in the regulations allows them to take the test, the class before they're eighteen, a test before they're eighteen. So it's, it's good news for the ambulance, you know, we're an aging group. Sorry to say. Sorry to feel.
But I think that says something really remarkable to our community. There's so many places now that are just begging for anybody. And if we have high school kids who are noticing that need in the community and willing to step up, I I think that's remarkable. And I think that helped also with Lady Catherine going on. And they can see that. Look in here.
So we, I was on call this weekend and we had a call and Catherine was, Catherine's on my crew. We were on our way over to Given to, for a transport over there. Catherine was just commenting as we were driving over. She said, "This is just so different to, you know, I always watched Dad do it, but now doing it myself is so, you know, intriguing." So, and and I know she's talked a lot to a lot of kids to, you know. This is something good to do. So, you know, again, thanks for the council support and city support. It's, it does wonders for us.
And to Sam for the, you know, drive to get that class organized here in Winthrop. That's a big deal.
Yep. And so last, last year there was one in Buffalo Lake and this is just, this is the twenty twenty five version of of that one. So it just happens that Sam stuck her nose in there and got it done, so.
Sounds like Sam.
Yep. And then I was just going to make a quick comment on the fire and ambulance building. We sent the plans back to ISG for some updates and some changes to it. So that'll be coming back around pretty soon.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Library. Wanda.
I was not at the last meeting, but Audra is here. Do you want to share?
Anything to say?
We are off of summer hours and have gone back to regular hours. So figuring out Friday afternoon staffing. You know, and it was nice to have two nights for programming, so now we're back to one night a week. Trying to figure out how that looks. Let's see. Michelle's doing a great job on activities, Storytime. Even though school has started, we're still about fifteen kids for Storytime on Tuesdays. We have mental health awareness week next month in October. We had three of the four grants at TDS this past time. And so all those three were approved. We anticipate on spending as much money as we can out of that budget or out of that pot. Some other grants have come in. I've gotten a four imprint dot com grant for five hundred dollars for branded things. We're going to use it for a wagon and a tablecloth with our logo on it, I think. And then I did fill out a grant at Newell Medical Center with a line of health for some charitable support for the Mental Health Week activities. So finding these little pockets of money and accessing those. We, we also have a remodeling project that we have found some grant possibilities for. And so looking at that and also working with ISG on keeping those plans moving forward. Let's see, Board has talked a lot about books to order and Board members are sending emails with suggestions, which is wonderful, and just trying to really get that figured out and get some new books in there. We also have gotten some donations of books, which is always nice. People were decluttering for the garage sales and so instead of, you know, putting them out in the net selling, they bring them to us, which is fine. We have acquired some things for our collection that way too. Any questions for the library?
Thanks, Audra. Where are we at? Please. Logan, you're up.
So, little update on Nick. He is currently in Philadelphia right now, getting certified for DRE. We've already seen a return in our investment on that. I'll go over here in a little bit on the numbers, but we've, he's gotten to quite a few DWI arrests specific to controlled substances. So that's, it's great. And it's just going to keep, he's a, he's a go-getter. So it's really good to see that we send our people to training and then they come back and utilize it in our community. So, to touch a little bit on our traffic issue in town. So the, the Culver project started on August twelfth. And as of today, I just ran the numbers before I came here. It is updated to a hundred and thirty eight traffic stops or traffic-related ICRs in that timeframe. So a little under a month. With that, there's been twenty eight citations that have been given out. Most of them are for driving around the barricade, some for speed, some for no licenses. In that same timeframe, we've had five DWIs, four of them being for controlled substance and one for alcohol. We've had three arrests for driving after cancellation, inimical to public safety. So that's, if you get caught driving at that status, it's a gross misdemeanor crime. So it's a pretty big deal. And all of these are stemming from road closures in town and the detours and all that. It was just notified a little bit ago that Reed's also out on another DWI right now and has arrested three individuals for controlled substance DWI for one of them, controlled substance possession, and another individual for giving a false name and date of birth. And they're on their way to city county jail right now. So we're doing our best to try and make the community as safe as possible. We're not going to catch every single one that's out there, but we're definitely doing our best. Any questions?
Thank the county too for coming by and helping on fifty seven and.
Yes.
We know they have a whole county to cover, but they've been.
Yeah, Safe Patrol's been here too. So that does help out.
And hopefully, I I heard the Culver project is on schedule. So we have their check in on Friday of this week, so.
There are a lot of pounding going on.
A lot of pounding.
Let's hope they pound fast.
So what is the completion for that?
Well, technically it was October fifth, but I think they have.
I think they pushed it back, yeah.
Adam, Mayor, I'd like to commend the Winthrop PD. We live on Hennepin. Hennepin for a day or two became Highway nineteen. It was not pleasant, but they quickly got it under control and we're very appreciative and still continue to monitor it.
We appreciate our police department.
Thank you guys.
Keep it up, Logan, appreciate it.
Thank your officers too.
All right. Where are we at? Planning Commission. Public Works, you've covered, yes. Okay, Cable Commission, that's next.
We have not met since April, May, June.
Okay, there you go. Planning Commission is next, Dawn.
Planning Commission has not met, but they will be meeting next month.
Great. Park Committee.
We have meeting on Wednesday night. I don't think we've met since our last meeting report, so, but we're going to be looking at our design ideas and being ready to make some choices on good, that looks like. Yeah, and they're continuing to fundraise.
Yes, they are.
They are, so people are being very supportive. We'll take any help we can get.
Is true. Report on RS fiber is me. RS fiber Joint Powers Board met Thursday, October thirty first. RS fiber Cooperative Board informed the Joint Powers Board that they are looking at selling RS fiber to Hiawatha Broadband. We had a report from the current chair of the cooperative. The Joint Powers Board passed a motion to engage legal service to ensure that the Joint Powers Board is fairly represented in the process and that any future consent to sell would also have RS fiber cover our legal counsel fees. That was recommended, then Shannon Sweeney recommended that we contact Jenny Bolton with Kennedy and Graven as part of that legal counsel. We meet again September twenty fifth at seven P M. So that's all I have on that. If you have any questions, let me know. All right. I think that's all our committees and updates. If there's nothing else, somebody would like to move to adjourn?
So.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.